I'd like to call this meeting, especially select board meeting to order on May 5th, May 12th at four o'clock. additions and deletions.
I would like to add too, if the select board would allow it, after the presentation, we'll vote on a legal license for fiber, fire sticks on the river. And then a pool of permits to move light fixtures from remon and power.
Light poles.
Light pole, sorry.
Citizens comments? And. Presentation by Foil Can on the main wastewater treatment.
So I'm just, I'm going to read off the list. All right, so. Let me just give a quick background. We're here to talk about. You know, this is kind of like our 60% review meeting. What has been done today? You can just go ahead and I'm not going to go through the background of the project location. I think you all know where your, your treatment facility is located. Here in town. So just a quick background, you know, in May of 23, we finished the preliminary engineering report. And submitted that to the state. I've got comments on that. Last year, May 24, we, we proceeded with step two final design services, which was collecting field data. We've done some surveys and geotechnical investigations of the site. And at that, so we started, we were also under contract to do some public outreach. And, and then things that put on pause a little bit while you were. You were purchasing the water department. So took a pause. December of last year. We came here in front of the select board and gave you kind of, we would like to look at some other alternatives for the biological process. We had that, we had that meeting and kind of came to. The concept of proceeding with final design up into a 30%. Point with, then we would go for a bond book. We'd have a better number. So here we are, we've looked at, we have amended the PER by looking at three biological. Treatment processes, and that's what I'm going to present today. And what my goal is today is to present those to you and to come away from this meeting with a direction of the biological treatment. Process for the final design of this, of the facility. Okay, so what's the preferred, preferred technology to advance? Once we have that, we will finalize the PER submitted to the state, the town into the state. Get concurrents and then we'll be ready to advance into final design. So that's, that's the goal for today. So. So. I think this is, I've already talked about this. We originally really only looked at one biological process. Previously, it was just to do a conventional activated sledge process. That could be operated as these acronyms are the Litzart Edinger, sorry, the LE process and AO process, which is. Anaerobic oxic and then an A2O, which is anaerobic anoxic oxic. And that's a conventional. And we opened it up to look at other process technologies so that we could have. How do we set up your plant to have more flexibility to meet future permit discharge limits? Smaller footprint, lower construction costs, less power consumption, less chemical consumption. Less complexity for the operators and. A process that would be more forgiving and reliable as the town grows with any kind of side stream loadings. Which is will enable those town to add. Add growth and that kind of growth that we're talking about is whether that's a brewery or it's restaurants, that kind of thing. So having more flexibility and. Being able to, I just want to, on that last bullet, really being able to set the town up and the treatment. Facility up to meet future discharge limits, which, which are coming to Woodstock's main wastewater treatment facility. As a total phosphorus and at some point in the future, a total ammonia nitrogen. But we can go ahead. So the three process alternatives we looked at, which are in the report is the A2O process. Which is, as I said before, anaerobic anoxic oxic. The sequencing batch reactor, which is the same technology that you have at Southwoodstock and anaerobic granular slash AGS. And I presented, or we had Aqua Rubik to come in and present on SBR versus AGS. Go ahead. This slide I just brought up to show you those future permit limitations. And I just want to, these are not in the permit now that the state is. Is, has not issued or revised or renewed permit at this point because. The town has advanced into preliminary engineering and final design. So it's a good faith. On, on their part, the town, they see the town advancing with upgrading this facility. And they are waiting until that, until there's a design to be able to issue those permit limitations. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. What this does not have is a total ammonia nitrogen limit, which is, we're starting to see. We're, we're going to be start seeing on the Connecticut River Basin and across Vermont. What will happen is in the next permit. The next permit that is issued, there will be monitoring requirements. They need to collect data to know what the limits should be for that for the plant. Biological processes, so. So an A2O process has. It follows conventional activated sledge in the sense that you have different zones of aeration tanks. You'll have an anaerobic zone up front, which means absence of oxygen. So it's just mixed and. After that, you will have an anoxic zone, which is mixed as well, but what happens is you start to reintroduce. A nitrate recycle into it to bring nitrogen rich bacteria back into the process. You then go into an aerobic zone, which is where you, you put your air into, that's your compressors, they put air. This sets up the conditions for biological phosphorus removal and ammonia removal. And then it goes into your secondary clarifiers and you have a return, RAS stands for return activated sledge, which comes back to the beginning of the plant. And that's, that brings beneficial biology back to the beginning of the plant for those, for those treatment processes to happen. The advantages of this system is that the anoxic zone allows for alkalinity recovery. Reducing the need for any pH adjustment chemical. Those are usually sodium hydroxide or magnesium hydroxide. The internal nitrate recycle, the nursing line increases your denitrification rate, which is needed for a total nitrogen. Removal to hit that limit in your permit. And your anaerobic zone is what is needed for what we call EBPR, enhanced biological phosphorus removal. It sets up the conditions for the bacteria to consume, consume. The phosphorus in the wastewater biologically, and that's going to help reduce the amount of chemical you need to. To then precipitate phosphorus out of solution. Disadvantages are that. You have to have just the right conditions in that anaerobic zone for. EBPR enhanced biological phosphorus to recur, otherwise you have to. Supplement with some kind of carbon source, which is like a citric acid or. You have to have, you have to have the right, the quality acid. Being created in that anaerobic zone. So it is a little more temperamental. It's, it's hard to maintain those conditions just right. It takes a good amount of instrumentation and automation to have this work. It does work. We're designing one right now in South Burlington. It is a very, it's a very reliable process with the instrumentation and the controls that are, that are put in. So it is, it is, it is working. It's a complicated process. So the next slide just shows kind of what that looks like, where that would be on the site plan. There's all that space. I don't know if that's north of the.
North is to the right.
North is to the right, but north of the existing clarifiers. This is the largest footprint of the, of the, the alternatives. It takes up the most tankage because you have to have each of the tankages aside for those biological reactions to happen. So it takes up the most space.
Those two green circles are, are existing. They're green. Not blue. Normally the blue means the existing stuff, but they're being reused.
Yes, so we are refurbishing the existing clarifiers and that, and where you see the green dash line would be future. A location for a third clarifier if you needed it for hydraulic increase. The light green is hard to see would be future space for filtration. Which is not going to be needed to start with for the, we anticipate a 0.8 milligram per liter phosphorus limit. Which can be hit with the enhanced biological phosphorus removal and trimming with chemical. If the, if the limitation were to drop below 0.5, that's when you really need to have some kind of tertiary treatment, which is a physical barrier. Like a cloth media or sand or that, you know, that kind of reactive type of filter. And then the small little L on the end is the, in green is a new, new disinfection. We can go to the next slide. So the construction cost for this process, it's about, for the tankage and the equipment for the A2O process is about. Five point seven million dollars. A new process building would be recommended to house new blowers and any of the equipment associated with that process. We would do that all the way to the north of the facilities and have it built close, closer to that. And the reason for that is the. The existing space in the operations building is not usable for new equipment. It is below the flood, the flood elevation and it would be. Trickier and more expensive to sequence the construction and keep the plant operational at the same time, which is a real concern. And there's a cost associated with the secondary clarifiers, upgrading them and the, the clarifier houses in between with pumps and access. And RAS pumps and WAS pumps rehabilitation. I just want to, this, the, this cost that I'm showing here is for purposes of comparing it to other biological processes. It's not the full upgrade, right? This is just the capital cost associated with this alternative, with biological. Just want to make sure that's clear. I am going to just pause here for a second. I also just want you to note that we tied these construction costs to the engineering news record construction cost index. These are tied to the March of 2025. And later, when I present full project cost, you'll see that I have escalated those to a. Projected construction date of when the project would go out to fit. And the other thing to note that these, these, boy, I shouldn't have brought my class. The other thing to note is that these costs, they include a contingency for what we call BABA, which is. Buy American, build American or build American, buy American. And that is the infrastructure law that was passed by the previous administration. That it was to jumpstart the economy. There are federal requirements to procure your raw materials and your equipment in the United States. And the compliance and. The compliance associated with that has driven costs. So we have readjusted. So the reason you're seeing higher costs than previously is to account for that. There's a real cost contractor has to factor in and the manufacturers have to factor into their price. And then.
They have to give basically a certification on every single piece of the boat. It used to be just the steel, the concrete, American steel. And now that's expanded to Baba, which is everything from the fire extinguisher to the louver to the primary clarifier. And it's, we're, we're dealing with it for the first time on Barlet Bay and it's, it's exceptional and.
It's.
We're filtering, we're including it, you know, it's got, it's, it's there.
There are no pieces of equipment, electrical pieces of equipment that are made in the United States. I mean, that doesn't have a part that's not sourced from another country. It's the circuit boards, if it's the relays contacts. So. Manufacturers are trying to figure out how to have a compliant piece of equipment and it's driving the cost. We have seen, we've had some manufacturers tell us it's up to 40% added to the cost. We have, these prices reflect the Baba, reflect that compliance. So that's what these, these prices are. And then the last thing I want to just note here, and this is consistent throughout, is that the contractor markup includes. 20% for his overhead and profit. We used to carry 15%. And over the last five years, for seven years, we have seen that that number is realistically more at 20%. Mobley's Mobe and D Mobe around 8%. And that is, and that. That can vary versus like where the project is located. Like if you were up in the Northeast Kingdom, it probably would be more like 10%. This is a, you know, Woodstock is situated at the crossroads of 89 and 91. So this would be probably a bit easier of a, a Mobe and D Mobe for them. And then bonds and insurance and we carried 2% for that. We have found that projects that are within a flood pain. Have to carry a certain level of insurance. From their, from their insurance companies. That is quite, quite onerous for them. So these are real costs. So the second, the second technology is aerobic granular sedge. I'm not going to go through all this because we, we had this whole. You know, we had this whole presentation with Aqua aerobics with you. But basically this is a dense sludge that is created at a much higher mix. Mixed liquor, liquor suspended solids. And I'm just going to go just to reiterate for the record, the advantages of this is that all the treatment happens within this singular. Granular and you don't need all the separate tanks. You don't need to have a tank that's had no. No oxygen and you don't need the tank that had the recycle come back to it and you don't need the tanks that have the aeration. It all happens in one tank in a batch type fashion. So that eliminates large tanks. It eliminates the clarifiers. It reduces, because all of this is happening biologically inside the granular, you have reduced chemical costs. It can handle high strength supernatants off of, off of the holding tanks, not the watering equipment. And. It's. It just, it has a smaller footprint. This process would come with a guaranteed manufacturer, a manufacturer's guarantee, process guarantee and aftermarket service. You know, we listed the disadvantage that it's an emerging technology. It is actually, it is, it. It is not. I don't, I don't think we see it as an emerging technology so much anymore. There are plants that are being commissioned all around the country and all across Europe. And so it really is starting to take off. So I don't actually see that as a, as a disadvantage. So again, on the site and whether we go round tanks or square tanks. That can be a discussion during design of what is more cost effective, but this would happen at the northern end of the site. What's not shown on here is a process building that would also be on the northern side to house any pumps or, or air compressors that need to be in there. But basically it's a lot smaller of a footprint and it gives you, after the clarifiers are demolished and the existing aeration tanks are demolished. It gives you a lot of room on the site for future, future expansion of the plant. If that is where the town. So the capital costs associated with this technology, this is, it needs to be a pre-equalization tank that just kind of. Levels up the flow before it hits the tanks for the AGS. That's about half a million dollars, the AGS process, including all the concrete for the tanks, equipment, civil site work, electrical work, about 4.1 million. That process building, the same for all three examples is around a million. So with a total, a subtotal for construction cost of 5.6, contractor markup, this is about a seven point, we call it 3.7. MGD alternative. Go to the next one. SBR is the same technology you have down at the Southwoodstock facility. Again, it's a small footprint because it's all in one tank and it's doing, it's more of a conventional. It's more of a conventional activated sledge because it's happening. It's the same steps that are happening in the first, the first alternative where you have, you have a. An anaerobic time, have an anoxic time, you have an aeration time, you have settling. It's just all happening in one tank. Advantages of this is that it's standardization for the operators. They know this, they know the facility at Southwoodstock could be the same kind of operation. They're familiar with it. It's, there's a process guarantee and aftermarket service. Aqua aerobics has a very good track record with that. It eliminates the clarifiers, gives you space on the site for future. Future expansion because it's kept a very modular, just like AGS. And you know, that batch process, like I said, all takes, it takes place in one tank. And, and one of the, actually, one of the good advantages, advantage of this, it's the same with AGS is that you can vary the cycles to, to. Account for variations in the incoming flow, variations of strength if it needs to be aerated for a little longer. Because it's coming in high in nitrogen or high in ammonia, or if we have wet weather, it can, it can go into storm mode. The disadvantages of the sequencing battery reactor is that it is limited in its. Biological phosphorus removal capabilities and will require of all three, the most chemical addition to achieve. Phosphorus removal. I'm going to the next slide. And again onsite, I'm showing three. I think the, the, in the report, we're, we're calling for two SBRs with a. With a pre-equalization tank, but that just shows you what the. How those would lay out on the site, a little bit larger footprint. The cost estimate that I'm about to share with you is for a two, it's for two tanks, not three. I'm going to go to the next. And then the cost estimate for this, that. Pre-equalization basin is a little bit more than it would be for AGS because it is, it needs to be a little bit larger for the cycles, the batch cycles. The SBR process, all concrete equipment, civil site work and electrical, about 4.2 million. Again, the process building around a million for a subtotal construction cost of 5.9. Contractor markup, this is about a 7.7. MGD alternative. So we can go to the next slide and this is where I want it, I want to. What I'm not presenting to you is all of how the sausage making, of how we determine O and M costs. But to do a present worth analysis, the first thing we do is we look at what are, what is the connected horsepower of all the equipment? And we compare it across all the alternatives at the same flow rate. Okay, so it's connected horsepower, that's, that's, that's the factor into the O and M cost and that's all in the report. That's all in the report. It's chemical usage. How much chemical is associated with each different alternative? Like I said, SBR is going to have the most chemical consumption because it can't do. Biological phosphorus removal as well as the others. And then man hours, which one's going to be more operator hands-on than the others? And so the top line is the, is the capital construction cost that I just presented, 11.7, 7.4, 7.7. The next line is the annual estimation of O and M costs for each of those alternatives. And we then plug that into a formula to calculate present worth. Which is a 20-year, the 20-year. Evaluation, looking, looking at it over 20 years and with a depreciation. And you'll see that the present worth of alternative two is the most favorable over those 20-year, over that 20-year lifespan. And this is all in the report and it's a little bit more of a broken out of like O and M cost if you really want to get into the. The sausage making. This is, I just wanted to. So alternative two AGS has the lowest present worth. Alternative three is just behind it and alternative one, the, the more conventional activated sledge process is the highest. And it's really the highest because of the amount of tankage that is being. That is involved with that process. All right, so the next, it's hard to see this. It is in our report, but we kind of went through some. We kind of went through just some non-economic kind of comparisons with each of these.
Can you turn my screen around for the board? Are you guys?
Can you see that?
No.
I'm on the desk.
Well, you can just.
Okay.
For this slide, please.
So. Basically, we took each biological process and we, we kind of ranked them and gave them, we gave them a score. On how they would do on a total nitrogen limit. Okay, the first column. And basically, all three are going to be able to hit a total nitrogen limit that comes in your, in your permit. Because you know. The denitrification capabilities are there in the tankage. You would build it sized appropriately for denitrification. To hit that, to hit that total nitrogen limit. The phosphorus limit, I think I just talked about this before, the SBR got a zero rating. Because it's not going to have the conditions available to, to do enhanced biological phosphorus removal. A2O process would do better at that. It got a score of two and AGS got a score of three because it, it, all of that biological, enhanced biological phosphorus removal happens within the granulars without chemical addition. So it's going to, it's going to do the best. It's going to do the best without chemical. Biological tankage, again, the A2O process at the top is the largest, so that got the lowest score. The SBR is the second. Largest, I got a two and AGS got a three. This is a small footprint. Reliability. We gave the AGS a score of three out of three because it significantly improves the reliability of your plant. It is going to be, have the most flexibility and able to treat any influence that's being thrown at it. Whether that is a process upset coming down the line from, from a, a user. Whether it's high strength who can't coming off of the, the such holding tanks, it is going to be able to react. Better to, to those kinds of sets. And we, we scored the A2O process and SBR process the same for that, for reliability. Complexity, we gave SBR the best rank, the best score here because you have, we're familiar with the process. You have, you have this that yourself would suck, but that's pretty much the only reason we gave it. The best score of complexity. I honestly would probably. Give A2O the, the worst score here. Because it is more things to operate. There is more things to have to work on, repair and maintain. You know, and keep, you got, all of those have to be running perfectly to be able to hit. You know, EBP are, all of them have to be, you can, you can add computerized controls, you can add automation and that will help with that. But it is, that is like the most complex of this three. AGS is going to do it in the granulars. It's going to take a lot of that out of the equation for you. There will be things to maintain like blowers pumps, but it will be the least amount. It won't, it will not be as bad. I think that's the A2O process. So I, I would have scored that differently, but we, we, we didn't think we could get an A2O perfect score. Across the board. Chemical consumption, I talked about this. Yes, yours ranks the worst because they are going to require a higher amount of chemical to be able to hit the phosphorus limit. And AGS will be able. Will get you very close to the positive limit that then would just need maybe a. Will get you very close to the positive limit that then would just need maybe a trim to, to actually get. When it may, it may not be needed, uh, I think the, um. The manufacturer said that they can get below a one milligram per liter, but I think you'll have that chemical as a backup. Um, just to trim, to have it, okay? And, um, A two O should be able to get fairly low, it would have this, it would, it would land in the middle between, uh. The SBR process and most, and the AGS, we can go to the next. So, one other thing we, we took a look at, um. For this P E R is we opened it up for some dewatering alternatives. And with, you currently contract dewater right now and the thought is that. The price, the higher Paul Senesak to come and dewater your sledge is going up and up and up. And he's the only game in the state of Vermont. Um, so you are beholden to whatever he charges you and his prices have been good. Um, so I, I took a look at. What could we do at the plant, what could we do and what would be the payback? So I, I, talking with, talking with Tim, we looked at a few different alternatives. We came up with, um, a rotary press, which is, um. I can get into all the mechanics of it, okay, rotary press is, it operates at a very low RPM. And it basically, you're, you're just squeezing, okay, applies pressure, it rotates very slowly and it's squeezing the water out of the sledge. But very low horsepower, um, there's a few of these facilities in the state of Vermont. County Richmond loves theirs, Rattleboro has one, they love theirs. These are, these are very, the, the guys in Richmond turn it on, they go home for this night, they come back the next morning. It's, it's a very reliable piece of equipment. The next slide is just what that cost would be and we were looking at retrofitting the, one of the bays of the maintenance garage. Not a new building, but just, could we put it in there and just do some minor improvements to the building, HVAC, things like that. To, to be able to, to add dewatering, so. A total cost, you, you'd have to add polymer, if you add polymer to sledge to help it kind of come together. Um, so a total cost, I'm just gonna go to the bottom line, it's about one point eight for a dewatering alternative. Second alternative is the centrifuge and the principle of how this works is the centrifuge spins at a high RPM. Um, and basically forces the water out, you know, if you think of those amusement rides. Where you're spinning around and forcing to the outside, the centrifuge is forcing the water to the outside, spins at a very, very high RPM. Um, there are many centrifuges around the state of Vermont, people use them, the facilities use them, um, quite reliably. Um, they're a little bit more hands-on and, you know, a lot of operators don't feel terribly comfortable with a piece of machinery like this. Spinning at tens of thousands of RPM, um, on its own. But it, but it, it is, it is a reliable technology, so we want to go get that. The total cost, cost of that is about a one point six, one dollar invested. The third alternative. Is a screw press and basically this is a, this is a pressing technology and if you think about it, it's the screw is just forcing. Um, the sledge to an area of compaction, so it is, it is squeezing the water out to the screw, just presses it. The end, these are very reliable, they have them all over New England, um, many people love these, these are, again, one that you can, people walk away from. Um, turn it on. Come back at the end of the day or the next day, um, they operate very independently. And the price of a screw press is about one point five. So we go to the next slide, just to compare some of them all. Uh, again, so the second line, the first line is that capital cost of the equipment, the second line is the O and M. And as you can see, um, a rotary press is a lot less expensive in operation. An annual operation and maintenance and it's due to the fact that it's like a half horsepower motor. It's not, it does not require the same kind of motors at the centrifuge, which usually has, has two motors, have, for main scroll and the back scroll. Usually around fifty, seventy-five horsepower each of those motors, so that's the big difference there. Screw press also has a pretty big motor to, uh, to drive the screw. Um, polymer cost is going to be about the same across the board, so it really is, um. The electricity that is driving the O and M cost. Um, and, and, um, I think what we also argued that the man-hours. Um, at a rotary press would be less than they would be at a centrifuge because it's, you can walk away from them. Um, so with the present worth over twenty years, you can see that, you know, alternative one, the rotary press and alternative three, they're about the same. Two point five, two point five, you know, it's, it's about the same, so it's really, that's what we. That's what we came up with some dewatering alternatives. So the next thing I wanted to do is just do a, a simple payback, like what, what would this mean for your, for the town and paying that? Like, how, how long would it take and, oh, this is hard to read. But basically, we, what we took was the amount of sledge that you're. You're dewatering right now and what is the unit, we came up with a unit cost to dewater that sledge right now. And then we, uh, we factored into the price, I mean, and so, and that's, this is based on real. Numbers from Paul Senesak and then we factored in what it costs him to mobilize and demobilize. And then what it was to, so that there's an annual dewatering cost. This doesn't even account for, um, disposal costs, this is just to dewater. And we escalated those prices over the years to account for inflation. Because this is, we saw a real jump in, um, Paul Senesak's cost. So we used that as the basis and we escalated each year. And by doing that, we came up with about a nine to ten year payback. Depending on which alternative is chosen and this is not, this doesn't, there still is a cost to dispose of your sledge. Um, all three of these alternatives would result in roughly the same amount of cake solids. Which could be improved with the right type of polymer, so it, I don't think one is gonna have a drier sledge than the other. It's, and, and it, you could get to the point where you actually pilot it on your foot, depending on what kind of biological process you need to. Dewatering. But I, I just wanted to do a payback, but when, when would this pay itself back? This gets it out of the hands of a, of a, of a contractor. So I want to talk about total project costs and. I carried the lowest biological process in here, this, this total project cost. Under the first column, this is the current tag to the, um, engineering news record construction cost index right now. I carried the AGS because it was the lowest one. Obviously, this would go up if a different biological process was chosen. The first line is your screen and new headworks building, grit removal, the intermediate lift pumps, these are all of the. All of the things that have been identified in the engineer, the preliminary engineering, um, report. That need to be rehabilitated to meet your, meet your wastewater needs for the next ten, twenty years. Um, the prices have gone up as I mentioned before because we adjusted them for FABA compliance. And we adjusted them for tariffs, we don't know what tariffs are gonna do, but anything that, um, is not concrete. Or gravel or PVC pipe, which is made domestically, we added a twenty percent to it. So these costs, I want, it, it might seem alarming, but these costs have some serious contingency built into them. Which I, we think could be real or may, may not be real. Um, so these are the, these are, this is what the total project would, if we get down to, I think it's. Twenty, um, current cost of twenty twenty. Uh, we carried a thirty percent contingency and you carry thirty percent contingency throughout design. And the reason for that is because. You might find things during design that need to be added to the project, it is, it is a buffer. A real example I want to share with you is the city of South Burlington, we're in design, they had a December storm. Where they almost, they lost the solids in their clarifiers, they had both of them, they had two, we were just gonna rebuild, take, bait two of them. And they saw a peak flow that they have not ever registered at the plant. And it forced us into going, building a third clarifier for them. That is something that wasn't identified in the preliminary engineering report and that's why you carry contingency. So that number is, you know, that's what thirty percent, that number dropped at construct, like heading into construction, you drop that number to five percent. So right now, contingency at like six point two million dollars that may not be realized. That may not be realized, so I just, the numbers look high, but I want you to understand that there's some padding in there for unknown. You carry five percent going into construction for the contractor, for things that come up. It is an example that it's not going to be applicable to Woodstock, but if the whole site, if they found ledge, you know, ten feet down. Like, that's why you carry that kind of contingency. At five percent going into construction. So we then project the cost up to, uh, projected. Uh, a projected bid date, September twenty sixth. Which is, is actually quite aggressive, um, we generally look at about eighteen months. For a design and approval from the state to be able to have approval to, to advertise for bid. So that could be a little bit, that could be a little later in fourth quarter, uh, twenty twenty-six. So with all said and done, we're looking at, um, we're looking at a, a total project cost at the time of bid. At about thirty-two hundred dollars and again. There is a lot of contingency put into that, six million of contingency and there is. Contingency to allow for tariffs. And unknowns of the market right now.
Can I ask a quick question? So if you take out the, the process, uh, I don't use AGS here, those other costs. Is there any way for those to decrease or those built into what the cost of just doing a new, uh, plant on that site?
I think if I understand your question, you're asking if this is a, these costs are associated with rehabilitation. Of your site. Not a new plant. Um, the things that are new are the screening and headworks and grit removal. UV is new. And the AGS system is new. We did carry a line, we did carry dewatering facilities, there are parts of this project that could be, could be. Heared down if need be.
Kristen, I was just wondering, um, I assume since you put the return, that the returns chart for the dewatering machines at twenty years. Those, is twenty years like when they would all need to be, when each of those. Models, that's about their lifespan, when they would need to be replaced, or would it be longer than that? We, I'm only asking, we did a thirty-year bond for the water company and I'm wondering for. Both the wastewater treatment system and some of the components that we talked about for dewatering, what the, um. What the kind of standard lifespan would be for some of these components?
Certainly dewatering equipment can last longer than twenty years, um, I'll just give you a case of, in, uh, Richmond. Their, their facility is beyond twenty years and their dewatering equipment lasted with, they needed to put, have some replacement parts. But it's not replacing the whole, uh, dewatering unit, you know, they needed to replace a couple, they're called channels on the piece of equipment, get a new. Uh, uh, they needed a new control panel, as you can imagine, control panels and electronics tend to become obs. Obsolete after so many years, but those aren't full, full replacements, those are just, um, those are just components of it. That need to be upgraded. In that, in, in about twenty years, but twenty, twenty-five years, um, with good maintenance, it could go longer. With good, you know, preventative maintenance certainly could go longer, I mean, you have stuff at your facility that is from the seventies.
I, I have a question, so after we get this built, the state's gonna turn around because we have to upgrade it.
In what sense?
You talked about, um. This charge and, um.
So. This upgrade would allow you to hit future discharge limitations. It would set you up to meet those, you would not need to upgrade, your plant as stands will not meet those limitations.
So for twenty years, let's say that's the lifespan, we don't have to worry about upgrades from the state.
That would be correct unless you grow hydraulically. If you're adding users that are beyond the permitted capacity of your plant.
Then you'd add a little more tankage, like we, like we showed, right? You, you add to the system.
For us, that would be a good thing, we'd have.
More, more user-based, more tax-based. So then what is the capacity that you're, that this is designed for? This is designed for.
And how many gallons do we average now?
You, I think we just, I think we came up with, you could add about five hundred units? Units. I wish I had, I had that all, I had a nice analysis.
We're averaging about hundred and thirty, forty without rain right now.
So you have to save about twenty percent of your capacity, like when you start bumping up. Over eighty percent of your capacity for ninety consecutive days, the state's like, what's your plan? You know, they want to look for, what is your plan, um, you're bumping up against your permitted capacity. So, um, that differential between eighty percent and where you are now is about five hundred units. But that doesn't, I mean, you're not gonna go over capacity, but that's, that's that differential. I don't know if we have any more slides.
Push the, push the nine, just push the nine. Or the three. Over there. That's the sage town button, there you go.
So this just took off a million bucks, by the way.
So project schedule, um, originally, you know, inside the box was our original schedule and this is what we're proposing is. That we, we, um. We finish up this P E R amendment and move forward with a, uh. A recommended project that we then, we finalize the report, we give it to the state and we get the state on board. And that we advance into final design. Um, the base, so what you see is basis of design and thirty percent complete, that would be the summer and, you know, third and fourth quarter. Um, we've shown here in Bonvett in November, that doesn't have to happen, that doesn't have to happen this year, it doesn't have to happen. In March of next year. I think what I'd like to leave you with is, I'd like. I'd like to see you advance into design, so you have a shovel-ready project, ready to go from when the town's ready. And I want to stress, your plant doing nothing really isn't an option, you, your plant. Has, you know, we have stated what the condition of the plant is, the state has seen that condition, report on the plant. They are. They believe you are acting in faith to upgrade your facility in some capacity, some, not hydraulic capacity, but in some form or fashion. So that you do not have permit violations. So. What I would like, what I would like to encourage the town to do is to advance the project. Into final design. We will have a better number for you as we go through that design, we can reduce that thirty percent contingency. You know, as we've gotten through design, and then you'll have a solid number to go for bond. We're not. We're not saying the town is gonna spend thirty-two million today, or even in the next five years. The, the repayment on the bonds don't ha- happen until five years after construction, two, five.
Two, five years after design, two years after construction, so. If it went to bond this fall and got built in the next, we, we need eighteen months to design, two years to construct, two more years to, until. The repayment of the loan starts is twenty thirty, as soon as it could be. I would add, you know, Bolt Valley is a project Kirsten and I cranked out last year for certain reasons. Got done by June and then they needed to find more funding, Northern Borders, and they haven't gone out to bid yet, so.
In.
That's been twelve months, it's been eleven months, and they made the choice. When they have to build it, you know, Lindsay up there, Bolton Valley wants to expand, and she has great plans, and she absolutely needs to do this.
She can't expand, she cannot expand her development on the mountain, which is the revenue she needs unless plant is upgraded, so she's constrained by that. The other thing that advancing into final design does for the town is, and putting off the bond vote is. There might be more favorable on the, I know things are uncertain right now, I know they cut the congressional directed spending, we did reapply for it. Things might change at the, at the federal level where those funds will become available again. There could be other programs that could be looked at, I think. I think having, getting yourself on the state, the state list for the clean water SRF would be a smart thing, so you show that you have a project. That you're committing to and you get a higher priority, which is more beneficial for you. When they start doling out the funds that the states have, state have. The cost of waiting will, the project will get more expensive, the more you wait. You won't, if, if something were to fail at the plant. You would be paying for an emergency repair, which is a Band-Aid, and then you'd still have to pay for an upgrade. And I'm gonna give you the example of another town we're working with, Littleton, New Hampshire. Has clarifiers that are about to fail and has to do an emergency repair to them, and the clarifiers are undersized, don't meet, don't meet the state guidelines. They will have to mothball those clarifiers and build new ones with their upgrade, so that is money wasted. Million dollars wasted. And I fear that if there's no action, I mean, we're already talking about not having construction until. You know, being done in twenty-nine. I'm not sure the plan. You're, you're getting at the edge of, of the reliability of the existence. Delaying, delaying will only cost you more money, and the, there'll be more competition for those federal, those federal dollars as well. There's a lot of uncertainty in the market, there's a lot of uncertainty in commerce and, and the funding, there are other avenues. That they're trying to steer states into, which are, it's called the Whisper Program, it's, it's kind of, it's instead of the Clean Water SRF. We're gonna do a little bit more research into that, it does require some matching grants, it may not be as favorable as a Clean Water SRF program, but. We'll take a look at that. And, you know, there could be other, if there's an economic incentive to this project, we could look at a Northern Borders grant. For the town, they like to see some kind of growth happen with it, like you are providing bit work, you're providing jobs. This expansion would, would benefit the town economically. So there are other avenues for us to take a look at.
Kristen, sorry, do you mean like in terms of commercial development or residential development or both?
Both.
Okay, thanks.
It doesn't have to be both, it can be and or.
Yeah, I mean, I think we want both.
But there are, there are other engines, there are other funding mechanisms out there.
We threw up a vote, I, I do need to warn a public meeting. Maybe quit this off till twenty-nine.
Hold up, hold up, sorry.
We can't vote anyway, it wasn't, it's not warned to vote, is it?
Right, no.
Well, what are you asking to vote on?
The decision to. To go to ninety percent design.
It's not warranted. So. But what I ask. What I ask for is direction on biological process, so that I can finish. The preliminary engineering report and submit it to the state. And so that is, are we gonna go the A two O path, AGS path, or SBR path? So that, that's what I would like to leave with, sounds like you recommend AGS, that is the engineer's recommendation. And it is also based on what I'm hearing from the operators.
Yeah, I guess. Can't vote on it, so. We can suggest it.
Can IS. Would. Waiting for the twenty-ninth delay you at all, I.
No.
Backing away for a bit too, so.
This is just not delayed.
Then let's. Put this on the agenda for twenty-nine. Yeah, and plus, I think, you know, just to be. Up front about it with everybody, we have, put it on a public vote.
Not in public voting, but. Just clarify.
Do you want me to vote on what biological process to use for final?
Yes.
And, and then with that is this, I, the. Idea of adding dewatering upgrade to it, and again, it could be something that's designed but not implemented. You know, there, it, that, that could be an option. And. We could look into phasing of this work as well, I think you're gonna get the most favorable price if the project goes out for one. You know, one contract, but that is also an option, we're doing that, that, that town in Littleton is, they're phasing their project, doing the headworks first. Well, during that emergency clarifier repair, then doing the headworks, and then upgrading their biological process after.
Good cost, more money.
It does. It does, you're paying for mobilization through times. Prices are gonna go up. Of those projects. For sure.
So the contractor gets the, the, the job. We're gonna pay for him to mobilize and demobilize. Then he's gonna get your next job and charge them to mobilize and demobilize. So if he has another job, they go to leash and charge us for demobilizing. Just throwing that out.
And I'd also like to say, there are some, we're seeing. You know, projects are coming in really high, higher than, than communities can afford, like, I mean, we understand, this is a lot, this is, this is a big project, and. We're seeing other communities. Investigate or look at what's called a C mark approach, which is a construction manager at risk. What that does is it, it brings in a contractor kind of early on in design, and they give you a guaranteed price that will not change. And so that's locking in a contractor kind of early on, and the discussions. I know that this is an approach that's in Burlington's using, I don't know if you saw the jaw dropping. Project that they're, they're proposing. Because it's so high, you know, having that kind of. Construction manager. At the beginning with a guaranteed price going into construction will, will help the, the city say, this is what it's gonna cost, we know what it's costing, and then they're not. Open, you know, then. They don't have to worry about bids coming in too high, but it also takes out the competitive nature of bidding, so it could go, you know, it could have a negative effect as well. But that is an avenue that we're starting to see. Around the state and, and, and around New England. They do this much more in the south. Than they do up here. For sure.
Yeah, the CM can also push back on the designer though.
Yeah.
As well, that's what. They can say, well, there's only two million dollars, so go redesign it three times and make the doorknobs cheaper and so forth, so there are pros and cons to it for sure, but. It is another approach.
It is another approach.
Is there anything the board want from Bill Tanner in the next two weeks for more information on a process that could provide?
I'm. I don't see, I'm fine with what I've got, I don't have a vote, anyone else?
We open it up to see if anyone else has questions.
The only thing I'm gonna say is, this can be kicked down the road in the back end, here eighteen years, nineteen and. I watched this happen four times. In twenty twenty-three, we had a price tag of thirteen to twenty-three million dollars, the original deposit. Well, it's raw, it's written in the book. In twenty-three, we said, help with buying water bottles, we're kicking out all of them, that's fine. Understandable why we did it. It was, it was both for the school, you know, we're worried about that, we're buying water bottles, worry about that. We now see we went for twenty-three million to thirty, longer we wait. We all know. Like Greg is a businessman, knows. Labor costs don't go down, they go up.
The equipment prices.
Everything goes up, so I'm not saying we shouldn't wait, no, agree, but it's a big thirty million dollars, a lot of money. But this is because of, it's been kicked down the road so many times, nobody wanted to, well, we'll wait, it'll be to do it later, no more wanted to deal with it. We're getting to the point where the state goes, that they like they didn't sell Woodstock. We got told to sell Woodstock, you need to bond it, you need to get this started, or we are going to start finding you by the day. Bush came to show there was a engineering firm that no longer works for us, through a number, two point six million dollars, we bonded, went six million. And that project finished at four point. Three, I believe. Because when old Tanner was running in. After the other engineering firm was booted, first words out of their mouth was, we're not doing this, there's no way to do this, the less than three point two million dollars.
Fight was challenging.
But it was, as soon as old Tanner saw what we had and saw the, the original engineering thing, they went, there's no way that's ever gonna work, we couldn't go back out for another month, we're doing it. The state. As she said. Is looking favorable on us for their putting off the permits because we are looking into upgrading, they know we are. If we don't do something next three to five years, they're gonna step in. Within three years, we're gonna have to firm it, I guarantee you, we're not gonna be that way. The first year they give you, okay, you know, let me try to, I try to do it, if you can't do it within a year. Then they're gonna bring clients in, if we're still not meeting it, that's where the fines, and they can really get ugly and really hurt. I'm not a town, I'm not a member, but I, I don't, I'm a back there, I don't have. It's, I understand it's a big bill to. To swallow, but if the more we put it off, that bill gets even bigger.
So in order to meet the phosphorus limit with existing facilities, it's gonna require some kind of chemical. Feed and storage facilities, the chemical can't sit outside. And it's gonna, it's gonna incur a higher cost, it's gonna incur more chemical because there is no biological. Phosphorus removal happening. Because the existing aeration tanks can't operate in an oxycoxic fashion, so. You're just gonna have to throw chemical at. At getting phosphorus out, there's no, you know, there's no filtration, it's just purely gonna have to be full condition, and so that's gonna be very expensive, I mean. That's how, that is what it is, if there were a problem with. Steel tanks, the divider wall in that existing aeration tank, and one of them were to fail. I think you guys have seen the plant.
I've seen the picture.
What could happen is all the, the two separate trains, all the flow would mix into each other, solids could. Settle out in that, in that one place where there's no aeration, and it could go septic, meaning anaerobic, and that could, that could kill the biology that's in the aeration tanks. And that could. Could, I'm just gonna use words I could. Don't know, we don't even wanna test it, it, it could make you not meet permit. That could, that could. Deteriorate the biology in the, in the aeration tanks to the point where they can't make, they can't make permit, biologic, like you get the VOD down or the. Or your nitrogen down, the plant as it is now can, will never meet a total ammonia nitrogen limit, will never meet that, the way it is now.
And I, I wanna clarify one thing, because I think the, the way the permit is used in this situation is so much different than I think what we're used to thinking, like you're used to thinking you go get a building permit, you build to that.
Yeah.
But here they give you a permit and say, you have to be meeting this level, you have to be meeting that level, and so. At some point, if we don't move forward, the state issues a permit, and we're immediately. In, in violation of that permit.
And what will happen is that they give you a compliance schedule, they will dictate, you shall be in design for this by end of this, you can finish design, you will be under construction by this date. That's, that's a little heavy handed, the state would wanna work with you in order to make that compliance schedule, but. They'll become a point where every data violating the permit will become. Administrative action.
Student, just for your analogy, it's like. You get the permit, that's your permission to build a home, but you're building a home to codes, and our home permit is essentially those codes.
Yeah, yeah. Someone had a great analogy the other day.
Well, if you're, if you're the DMV, your car's not passing, this car's not passing inspection, but it is interesting, I, you know, I'm a structural engineer, you don't know that, but. The codes. These, these, these permits, you know, they change, they add, they add the, the ad limits, ad limits, ad limits. And I was like, well, that is a little different than the environmental ability code, but it's obviously not, you know, the wind, the wind, wind design loading chapter when I started was a couple of pages, and now it's like. Hundred and twenty-two pages, how to calculate wind pressure on every different little surface, so. And, and of course, you don't have to go back and change. You know, the Empire State Building to meet today's codes, to meet the new code when it rolls out, that would be the difference here. But it is what it is, you know, the environmental regulations are getting stringent, getting more stringent, and. It used to be. Phosphorus, I guess.
It used to be, well, it's phosphorus in the Lake Champlain basin, but they are starting to impose phosphorus limitations on, on this side of the Green Mountains, anything that drains to Wenfusaki or to Connecticut River. The Connecticut or the Long Island Sound Drainage Basin has a nitrogen limit, you have a nitrogen limit. Well, it's not written into the permit yet, but as soon as the permit is issued, it will be written into the permit, that is different from a total ammonia limit. Which they're gonna start requesting data on so that they can. Have factual information on the receiving stream, they have to meet, so the guidance is, what you're trying to meet is, it's the water quality standards of the state of Vermont. So they're looking at what your F one is and how that impacts the receiving stream, and that is the governing, that's the governing code, the water quality standard, so.
Questions, comments? I'll go for one more, you were talking about a public vote for the process, does that mean in front of public or having a public vote?
No, that, that means. That means that's boring.
The second, it's a pretty confusing situation.
No, it's just for us. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. If you have any questions along the way, you can, you know, email me, I think you all have my email, or you can get it through air. And I'm happy to answer any questions, I'm going to celebrate my daughter's graduation with a trip to Japan next week, so I will be out of the country for the four weeks, so. Paul will text me the decision on the twenty-one. Paul will text me with the decision on the twenty-one.
Yeah, um, should anyone come down for that, should, um. I think all, the board has, yeah, I think, I think they should be okay, but not, yeah.
Yeah, and Paul and John, and you know, Amy can come down, Amy is, I think you've met Amy before, she's my biological treatment. Right hand. She can answer any, any like, you know, confusing questions about the process if you need that, and, uh.
I just wanna circle back, the first thing Kirsten started off with was. We're not spending thirty million dollars right now, we're just, we just strongly recommend. That you move forward with the design to kind of keep the permit in place and just the shovel-ready and all that stuff. And I go back to Bolton Valley, you know, we cranked to get that done by the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And, and then they needed to find more funding, so you're not alone, but they have a design that's ready to go.
That plant doesn't fail on them.
And, and, so, you're not alone, this is kind of normal-ish, but.
Not many communities have that kind of money.
Yeah.
It's really, it's really, it's really difficult, base sales aren't gonna do it, base sales aren't gonna do it. I mean, just an example, and I'm not recommending for these, for your facility, but like Richmond's considering. Um, becoming more of a septic receiving facility to off, you know, to generate revenue. Um, there's definitely facilities that see that as a way to increase the revenue to take that burden off of the taxpayers. Or not the taxpayers, the users, so, um, and we can, you know, we started to look into the rate analysis. And we can advise you more on, on ways to, uh, shoulder the burden of, uh, the project. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Uh, so just two quick things, one, um, green, ammonia, so, um. I should, with the, the chairman, I shared a while ago, and I know it's interesting, the rest of the board, is the Green Mountain looking to move. The polls, at least, need sign off on a permit, uh, have a slow board approve it.
Yeah, I've seen that, it needs to happen.
Yeah, I think so.
But, so, it's a permit, it's an action on, on your part to approve the, sign off on the permits.
So I move, we approve the Green Mountain permit to move, um. Hole ninety-five-two away from the river edge. And the other actions described in the notification of pole wire and underground load data.
There's a second.
A second.
All of them favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now your usual, the license.
Oh, yes.
So, one is, um, five oh six on the river, uh, for consumption. I know, I know Susan will do the normal thing, but also just make sure that they have the following guidelines of pictures barricaded or have a space between with alcohol. Would be my only other recommendation.
Okay. So I move, we approve the outdoor, um, consumption permit for five oh six. Based on two assumptions, one or one assumption, one condition, the assumption that the state is reviewing the permit. Since they don't give up enough information to do that anymore, and a condition that they comply with all of our. Um, fencing and other requirements for outdoor consumption of alcohol.
There's a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hey, we, no need to go into exact research now.
Move to turn.
Second.
A second.
All of them favor?
Aye. Aye.
Eric, do you wanna sign this?